Where did this name come from?
I'll ask when I see you at home. On Monday. Well, if I see you before then, well, I'll give you the name.
The sheriff.
But I'm going to change it.
It might have been the.
Oh, okay. Yeah, maybe. Yeah.
Yeah.
They're not so with their own blessing, what is the praise for that?
Yeah.
That is nice. Yeah, it was like Marshall Street too. Think it might even be the same. Because they're not going to kill us. They don't want to kill us.
Do that in a patch.
Art and patient. I know.
I call to order the New Kent County Board of Supervisors January thirtieth, twenty twenty four meeting to order. Ms. Watkins, will you call the roll?
Mr. Evelyn.
Here.
Mr. Moyer.
Here.
Ms. Pearson.
Here.
Mr. Steers.
Here.
And Ms. Stewart.
Here.
Good morning. Thanks, everybody, for attending this morning. Uh, Mr. Steers, do you have something?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, before we get started with today's work session, I'd like to speak on an item and make a motion. Back in December, the last board appointed Amy Pearson to be the interim board member after Patricia Page passed away. When the term of office changed over after January first, there was talk that the new board had an opportunity to appoint an interim board member. At our last board meeting, I explained that we ought to give the new board members time to review applications, but that I had nothing against Amy and thought she was very qualified. Our new board members have had time to review their applications, and I think it's time for us to make an appointment. For these reasons, I move to appoint Amy Pearson to fill the vacancy on the Board of Supervisors and serve as its District Three representative with a term of office beginning immediately and ending when a duly qualified successor is elected at the special election on November fifth, twenty twenty four. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Steers. Ms. Watkins, poll the members, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Any comment?
Um, yeah, I just have a quick comment. Um, I think everybody knows that I was pretty against the process in December. Um, and I do think it's possible to disagree with the process but agree with the person. And from what I've come to know, Ms. Pearson, I do know that she will lead with the best of her abilities for the citizens of District Three until the special election is called in November. Um, but just because I feel like this is still a rubber stamp, I'm going to abstain, but with love, Amy. So.
Ms. Watkins, poll the members.
Mr. Moyer.
Aye.
Ms. Pearson.
Abstain.
Mr. Steers.
Aye.
Ms. Stewart.
Abstain.
And Mr. Evelyn.
Aye. Motion passed. Congratulations, Amy.
Thank you. I just want to thank everybody for the confidence in me. Um, I, I do have something I want to give Ron. I was going to take these to you on Sunday, but I thought I'd bring them to you today.
Donuts, guys. We're good to go. Thank you. Another comment, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is the first time in the history of New Kent County where there have been two females serving on the Board of Supervisors at the same time. I think that's awesome. Also, for all of you who know me as a photographer, my trademark is to wear an earring. It's the first time the majority of the board wears earrings. Thank you.
All right, thank you. First item this morning is the update on the P U D dash one, Hairs Twenty Two Liberty Landing. Applicants have some comments?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, my name is Jeff Geiger. Uh, appreciate the opportunity to come back before you. Um, we have some new board members. We have a board member, um, that, we have one new board member. Uh, we have a board member who saw this presentation, uh, at the planning commission. Uh, two new board members, I'm sorry. One plan, one member, uh, who saw it at the planning commission. Two, wow, I'm doing terrible here. Two who saw it at the planning commission, one new board member. Um, apologize. Um, for the benefit of the new board member, um, I've got a little bit more detail in here that, um, some people have seen. Uh, and then for the benefit of the two, uh, board members, uh, who saw it at the planning commission, uh, some, I'm going to highlight some changes, uh, that we've made since, uh, you last saw it. Um, as you all know, uh, from your staff report, uh, the proposal before you is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Uh, it, it furthers, uh, your strategic plan, um, for not just the county, uh, but for the type of development that you want to see in the county. We were, at the outset of designing this revamped proposal, uh, for this property, uh, we used your strategic plan to understand what were the, uh, businesses that you wanted to target, uh, as part of the development. And so we've created a commercial area that focuses in on, uh, creating opportunities, uh, for businesses that want to sell general merchandise, restaurants, clothing and accessories. In addition, your strategic plan talked about the need to create space or opportunities for more daycare, medical office, and neighborhood office. And that is what we have done with the commercial portion in the front. In addition, your strategic plan talked about the importance of creating middle market housing. When you go and look at new construction housing in New Kent, your starting price is generally at the five hundred or above. And that is hard for, um, that, that is above what we consider the middle market range. We are going to create new cap, new, um, construction housing opportunities, uh, for people in that middle market range. Uh, the last board asked us to help, uh, visualize what the commercial frontage along Route sixty, uh, would look like. Uh, what I'd like to do, uh, is with this slide, kind of give you a sense of that place, sense of place, socialization, activation, uh, small shop retail, uh, that we would like to create along Route sixty. And then we have created a little, um, video graphic, uh, to show you. So as you're driving down sixty, you get a sense of what it would look like, um, traveling, uh, along sixty. As you pass the open space, uh, that is built in, uh, to the community, even within the commercial area, uh, we believe that open space is important for attracting the restaurants, uh, and customers, uh, that not only want to come in and, and visit a place, uh, but also have a place for their children to play or to maybe even walk off a, a big meal. How, as we've talked about, um, previously, uh, with the prior board, uh, uh, but after the last, uh, planning commission hearing, um, we have added proffers, uh, at the request of, uh, the prior board. Um, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars will be contributed, um, by the applicant for, uh, to go towards the acquisition of land, uh, for the fire station. And then we will also make a contribution of five hundred thousand dollars towards the traffic signal, uh, if that signal becomes warranted. Uh, as we can talk about more, if you want, about what it is to be warranted, uh, but we believe it will eventually be warranted as we move through the development. Couple of changes that we've made, uh, to the PUD ordinance, uh, since the planning commission, uh, heard it. Uh, some of these bullet points will be, uh, familiar to some of the board members. Um, one of the prior board, one of the concerns of the prior board was that we have buildings, um, that look like they front, uh, on Route sixty. We didn't want the back of the house to be facing, uh, Route sixty. Uh, and so we have added a proffer, uh, to ensure that that, the side of the building that is facing sixty, uh, is the architectural front. Um, at the request of the prior board, we also increased the setback, uh, from sixty, uh, to sixty-five feet. It was originally thirty feet. We've added a requirement, uh, that the private pavement, either a drive aisle or parking space, uh, be set back a minimum of thirty feet. And as this, these first three proffers really get to that vision that we showed you, uh, in the illustrations. Uh, we've also continued to have conversations, uh, with the daycare provider, uh, that is interested in locating here. Uh, and we feel comfortable of making a proffer commitment. Uh, this last bullet point is brand new, um, for this request. Uh, they are interested in ten thousand or more square feet, uh, and so we are making a commitment to build that, uh, ten thousand square feet, uh, out of the gate. The... In conversations, um, leading up to today, uh, a request that we got was to add some more requirements around, um, the construction of sheds on the property. Uh, so we have built that into the, um, the PUD. Uh, you can't just bring a shed from Home Depot and drop it in your backyard. Uh, it's got to architecturally, uh, it's got to be built on site, uh, and has to be architecturally compatible. Uh, we also received, uh, some comments before, in between the last presentation and this one, about ensuring that these don't become a rental community. And so we've added a proffer, uh, that these must be marketed initially, uh, for sale as owner occupied. Uh, and then, as has been mentioned previously, uh, we have restored, uh, the, um, uh, New Kent's equivalent of assisted living as a permitted use, uh, within the commercial area. Now, I'd like to take a minute and talk more generally about, not the specifics of the case, but what I believe is a benefit to New Kent County. As you may know, you created the Bonnersbridge Service District to pay for infrastructure to serve the businesses and communities down there. This included, um, sewer infrastructure, uh, within that area. You then floated bonds to pay for them, and the agreement was that the residents and the businesses within that area of the county would pay off the bonds. Last year, that payment was removed, but the bonds have not been paid off. Instead, all of New Kent pays for the bonds. They pay it as ratepayers, and those bonds have to be paid off still. I would submit to you that we can do a benefit for all of New Kent by removing that payment obligation. And instead, put it on one property. Put it on one company. One company will pay off those bonds. How do we do that? We pay it off with the connection fees and the availability fees that this project would have to pay into the county. Total of eighteen, nine, almost nineteen thousand dollars per home. Results in almost five point five million dollars paid into the enterprise fund for the public utilities. Those would retire those bonds. In addition to that, we are promising, uh, to pay a cash proffer of eighteen, eight thousand dollars, uh, per single family detached home and four thousand dollars per townhome. That results in one point seven million dollars into the county's general fund. If you decide what, what needs you have, uh, for those funds. Now, our impact isn't just going to be right at the beginning. Over a ten-year period, why ten years? This community isn't going to show up tomorrow. It will take us ten years to construct it. Over that time, you will be collecting more revenue. In addition to the five million dollars I mentioned, DPU receive an additional four million dollars over that time period. And the general fund will receive, uh, including the cash proffer payments, five point seven million dollar payment, five point seven million dollars. After that, each year, we will pay our expenses. As we all know, the biggest cost of expense is our school system. It will cost, we, through our analysis, it costs three point, three thousand seven hundred dollars per home. After we pay that, there is then a surplus for every year after the initial ten into the county revenue. So, we would like to also highlight a question that we received from the prior board. Prior board said, are your school numbers right? Could you be generating more students? And that surplus we're talking about isn't accurate? So we asked. In red, circled in red were the numbers that we used in our analysis, and it was based on data from com- similar counties. We were challenged to go to New Kent and actually get the New Kent data. We did, and the New Kent data is in green. You will see we were pretty close on the single family. We estimated point four students per house, and what you actually experience in New Kent is point three six, just a bit under. We were way off on the townhouses. We assumed point three two students per townhouse. What you actually experience from your townhouses is significantly less, point one seven. So when we add that New Kent data into our analysis, you get seventy-five students, not the hundred and three that we projected. We haven't changed anything. Our analysis, all the numbers I presented you are based on a hundred and three, not seventy-five. As we've mentioned previously, uh, we would like to request approval of the planned unit development before you in order to create a community of controlled development that meets your comprehensive plan, provides the objectives that you are looking for in your strategic plan in order to pay off bonds, provide funds toward the fire station and a traffic signal, and to provide additional tax revenue expansion for the county. This will create an economical and efficient use of the land through unified development, providing a community where people can live, work, and visit. And importantly, we think a large component of this property will be preserved as open space. With that, be glad to answer any questions that the board may have.
Any questions or, Geiger? Comments?
See, I don't know if it's a question or a comment, but first comment is, thank you, um, Mr. Boyd spent time with me last week getting me up to speed, and I really appreciated that. It was very helpful. We did talk about, and I don't see it any, in here, any mitigation efforts for our sheriff's department. I think, um, and I've thought about this since our conversation with Mr. Boyd last week, that it's an understanding that a sheriff's department need will be when they take the first tree down and not when the first resident is living there. Um, and I just didn't see anything in this plan that addressed that.
Um, in my view, and you can tell, board can give feedback as to whether this answers your question appropriately. Uh, we are providing a cash proffer payment, eight thousand dollars per single family detached home and four thousand dollars per, um, townhouse. It's unrestricted. However you, the board, would like to allocate those funds, that's your choice. If you'd like to allocate it towards the sheriff's needs, we'd be happy to support that. When we started this process on this particular request, your comment was a comment we heard from the sheriff's department. And when we got that comment from the sheriff's department, we did not have the cash proffer payment in the request. The last staff report that was issued, uh, that was not a comment, uh, repeated by the sheriff's department. So, I hope we've addressed the sheriff's needs.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
I, I believe that first proffer will be paid when there's a house built, correct?
Hmm.
So I think what we're talking about, a difference in time probably of six months, that you will like your property, like my property, protected. And I pay my taxes to protect my property. Um, your land tax isn't the same as what would be needed to have deputies patrolling that area. So what, I think what we're asking is,
Okay.
uh, would there be any, any type of proffer before that first house is built? For the safety and protection of your property. Second, um, one of the problems we had at Patriots Landing is we had promised, we were promised a traffic light, and we're going to get that traffic light at Marketplace. Hooray. Uh, the problem was, uh, East West, uh, gave us ten years to get it in, and they would pay for it. Well, the tenth year went by, the traffic light wasn't put in, now VDOT needs to pay. Thus, I believe it might take a little longer. Right now, it's, it's promised by spring or summer of this year, but East West will pay for it. So what we're, what I'm asking is, is there some kind of time limit on that possible traffic light that you were promising?
Let me answer the first question first. I'm happy to talk to my, the applicant about the timing. So know that when I provided a little additional information for your consideration. This landowner has been paying taxes, just like everybody else. And not on A-land, but on commercial land. And so I would submit and ask the board's consideration that that be recognized. They have been contributing in without really use of their land for the requests that they would like to put it towards and been paying for the services that you're asking. But as I noted, I'd be happy, uh, to have that conversation with them about timing. Um, on the second item, uh, that the, um, we are projecting, uh, that we are committing to paying for the signal contribution, uh, through the end, uh, of the development. Uh, and so, is that a specific time period? Um, no. Again, um, I appreciate the feedback, uh, and we can have that conversation, uh, on that timing. Um, there is a state law, I believe it's twelve years. Um, we can, um, have that cash, um, promise out there, uh, but at some point, the, the obligation's got to come back. The, the, it's not there to, to last into perpetuity.
What, you got the, Mr. Moyer?
Um, I'll go back to, uh, I believe it's Cloverfield or, um, development over in, uh, uh, Chesterfield County that Boyd did. Uh, townhouses that were built, um, didn't really sell till too well because there wasn't any commercial there. Clover was built, all of a sudden the townhouses sold. Um, I'm, I'm a little worried about this development going forward at the pricing that we've talked about, um, for both townhouses and single family homes. The attraction, uh, would probably be if businesses would be able to be put there possibly first. Um, the two hundred and fifty dollars per square foot for houses are not something that's, that, that is not a mid-market price. The total of the, of the house cost maybe, but not, not per square foot. Um, and that would be, if, if we do the numbers real, it's really easy to do the numbers on a townhouse. A three hundred thousand square, a three hundred thousand dollars, uh, townhouse. Uh, a, a three, a three hundred thousand dollar townhouse has a thousand square feet. Is, is three hundred dollars a square foot. Doesn't, that doesn't exist in New Kent. That is not mid-market. Um, it's just a way, another way of looking at it. But, um, when somebody goes to sell something like that and they see a two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollar square foot, they move on. Just my opinion.
Um... I'll see if, um, either Joseph or Justin want to come up and talk about the other development. Um, I'm not familiar with that and the experience there. Um, the... I think you are, from our perspective, there are minimums in there, and that doesn't mean we're going to build to the minimum. We're going to build to what the market requires from a per-square-foot basis. Um, if we need to look at those minimums to make you a little bit more comfortable in terms of the size of the house that's going to be built, we're happy to do that. At the end of the day, the market drives, you know, what the price that you're going to pay. we're happy to do that. At the end of the day, the market drives, you know, what the price that you're gonna pay. I would ask that the board consider three elements that go into a house. The cost of the land, the cost of labor materials, and the cost of government regulation. Unfortunately, the environment we are in requires us to address a lot of cost from government regulation. I know it's a finding ways to lower the cost of housing. It's really hard to do it in labor and materials. It's really hard to do it in the cost of the land. But I know that part of the state initiative is to find ways to create more affordable pricing for housing. And we're committed to doing that. We will provide housing that we think is in the middle-market range for the cost we have to produce it at. And are we gonna build three hundred thousand square-foot homes at that price? No. The price is what the price is based on the market. We will build housing that people need with the choices that they want on the inside. We have a variety of products that we can sell them, and we would like to give New Kent the opportunity to meet its strategic goals, providing that middle-market housing that is in that three, two fifty, three, four hundred range.
What? Does anybody else have anything? Mr. Gager, thank you. I guess we'll see you next month. Before we move on to the next item, Commissioner Laura Timovich is in here today. I think she's got a little quick update for us.
So the reassessment twenty twenty-four is officially complete, was completed on December twenty-second of twenty twenty-three. And the first notices were mailed this weekend, with the remaining going out by the middle of this week. Our veterans will be receiving the first layer. Properties that participate in the AFD went out yesterday with the majority going out by tomorrow. So hopefully your phones don't ring but so much. The total, yeah, sorry. The total reassessment value was six billion, two hundred and eighty-three million, five hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six, with the taxable portion of that being five billion, six hundred and seven million, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six. In comparison, in last year, the total in twenty twenty-three was four billion, two hundred and seven million, thirty thousand, one hundred. It's about one point four billion dollars in extra assessed value. Most of this is represented in our new construction. It's a twenty-four percent increase on our taxable value. I want to remind everybody that the board did a follow fifty-eight point one dash thirty-three two one and equalized the rate as required when any assessed value exceeds one percent. And our prior tax rate was sixty-seven cents, and the equalized rate is now fifty-seven cents. What does that mean to your constituents? Sixty-three percent will receive a bill that is fifty dollars or less negative compared to last year's bill. Not every property appreciates at the same rate, so there are some fluctuations since the rate is done on the total-to-total, but sixty-three percent, the majority of the remaining is new construction. So that percentage is skewed. Obviously, those that are paying five hundred dollars more have a new home. They didn't pay on last year. So the majority of the increases go to the new construction where they either partially paid last year for a prorated home, or they just built a new home. Seven hundred and seventy-five new homes were built since the last reassessment. We were talking, or the prior speaker was talking a little bit about affordable housing. I would like the board to recognize that the average sale price in New Kent County is now four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Thinking about that, in twenty twenty-one, it was two hundred and eighty-eight. In the last general reassessment, it was three hundred and sixty-five. So we can see the escalation. In the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three years, seven hundred and thirty-six new parcels went to record, which is, it's an unprecedented amount of growth. The last, I thought when I came to you in the last reassessment with six hundred and forty-one new parcels, that that had broke a record. And in comparison, in the prior, it was less than five hundred. Over a hundred and thirty-eight million dollars in new construction, and that's a prorated example of just the homes last year that my staff had to assess, and over fifty-four million in new parcels. Our commercial, the objective is always to increase our commercial and get away from rooftop taxation. So there has been a little success in that, where the value of the commercial properties in the last reassessment was ten point four percent. It is now at eleven point one. They only, only four point, four percent of all the parcels in New Kent are zoned for commercial, but they are about eleven point one percent of the value. The remaining notices will be mailed this me, meek. The deadline to appeal will be March fourth, twenty twenty-four, as we did in the last reassessment. We will be doing a series of online informational. The first video should go out this afternoon, just pretty much asking people to watch for this coming in the mail. And if they don't receive it by the middle of February, please contact our office so that we can send them a new copy effectively. The, the biennial report is what I gave to Wanda, which gives you a better cross-section and specifics. And after you read that, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to contact me. Any questions?
Laura, I have a, oh, sorry. You said in twenty twenty-one, the average was two, two eighty-eight, is that what you said?
Two eighty-eight.
And it's, the average now is four thirty-five.
Four hundred and thirty-five thousand, average.
Right. Do you think that's because higher-end homes are being built, or is that, that's not purely market?
Most of it's market. I mean, when you talk about the cost of materials and land that are going in, and if you look across the nation, those, that's an experience not unique to us. Now, I would say that our prices have also escalated due to low inventory in New Kent and a high desirability to locate here. So while in twenty twenty-three, we saw a slight slowdown due to interest rates, but it also created even a lower inventory. So demand is greater than supply. Anytime that happens, it's going to create, you know, the price increase. I think housing forecasts are anticipating some lower interest rates coming up in the spring, and that will reopen the market. They also expect that while commercial construction may slow, new single-family home will be the highest end of the market. And that's not just for New Kent. That's more of a nationwide or a regional forecast.
And on the commercial, does that include AutoZone or no?
No, no, and yet, yes and no. No, that amount does not include AutoZone. The way the reassessment works is there will be an amount, they will be assessed as under construction as the first of a reassessment year. Usually, they're not picked up until it's finalized. However, any building that is substantial complete as of the first of a reassessment will be assessed as it stands. But the numbers that you received today, for instance, we try to keep up with new construction. My staff is struggling with this. We do it as quickly as we can, but I have a very small staff and multiple responsibilities. December tenth, we pulled, we had inspected new construction through December tenth, and we had a hundred and ten new homes to try to complete before the twenty-second of December, before the end of the year, so we could include it. AutoZone, we are just finalizing those numbers as it will be a prorated amount. You're welcome.
Anybody, Stewart?
Did you say that March fourth was the deadline for appeal?
Anyone else? I know you said one thing about the, you know, homeowners could possibly see a fifty-dollar decrease, but that is if the tax rate remains at fifty-seven cents. If it does change, I mean, I just want to be, you know, put it out there.
Of course. That's all in your, in your, in your budget. And, you know, hopefully, we've given you enough information to help with that in determining, you know, what the county needs are. That part's not my end, but I just did want to remind everybody that you took that proactive stance as required so that when and if, if this budget requires, it will be actually apples to apples, and that they will start with a tax bill that looks similar to what they've been paying. So when you, when you say, hey, we need a couple more cents, constituents can experience what that's really gonna mean to them in money versus having it inflated, but you can't do that anyway because the law requires the equalization, but.
Ms. Moore?
Commissioner, one thing I've heard from people is they'd love to be able to pay their taxes twice a year versus once a year. Is it possible, when they get their evaluation of what their taxes will be, that they could pay half of it in June?
So payment isn't me. Payment isn't my side. I just do the assessments, but I do know that the treasurer allows payments at any time. Now, it is harder for us. Once we have the number, we can estimate. But right now, I'd have to estimate based on the equalized rates. So if somebody said, what is my tax bill gonna be this year? As a matter of fact, their notice includes what their tax bill would be if the rate remains at fifty-seven cents. So they could take that amount on their notice and say, okay, I'd like to pay half, and come up and pay it, and it's a prepay. They can pay every month. They can set up with the treasurer monthly installments for their taxes if that's what they wish to do. I know the treasurer's very open to early payments for anyone who would want to.
Ms. Pierce?
Laura, you and I talked about this, but the additional tax revenue at fifty-seven cents
From new construction?
Is about a million, is what you said?
In tax dollars, yes.
Yes, just like to make the board aware that yesterday, the UVA Weldon Cooper Center released its annual population estimate.
And I missed it, okay.
While we're talking growth, in regards to growth rates, New Kent led the Commonwealth with a growth rate of eleven point nine percent. Number two was seven point seven percent. So we significantly led the state as far, that was good.
Still, what was our total, Rodney? I'm sorry.
Total population, I don't quite remember.
I'll look it up.
I think it was twenty-six. Yeah, twenty-six.
My tax roll would say it's twenty-six to twenty-seven.
Yeah, twenty-six to something, yeah.
Well, thank you. I feel like it's important to let all the board members know exactly what's going on when you called me yesterday because when people get their tax bill, they will call us first. But I would tell all the new board members, you can reach out to the commissioner and her staff if you have some questions. They've always been very helpful, so.
Yeah, please just forward them on to us, and we will help them through the process. If the board is not aware, I spend a lot of the year, I've developed a course where I teach in the Homeowners Association, teaching them about reassessment. For those new board members who haven't taken that, maybe you'd want to partake in the next class that I'll offer. And it really does go through how to appeal, really how we can guide them through the process because I think it can be overwhelming to an individual. But I don't want anybody to be intimidated by the process. If you don't agree with your assessment, give us a call, set up an appeal. It's a pretty informal process where we can have a conversation. And either we're gonna show you why your assessment is what it is through the sales, or if you're right, we're gonna fix it. It's that simple. So.
And I have, I've served on the Board of Equalization and almost, I mean, the majority of everything is taken care of by the Commissioner of Revenue's office before it even comes to us. That's, we get, I mean, well, the Board of Equalization.
That's our, that is our goal. That is our goal. It's probably, every two years is probably one of the largest programs we have to undertake, so.
And our population was twenty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-five.
And growing every day. And that's from July, so I would argue that we're probably over twenty-six. Yeah.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Next item is the Woodhaven Property Homeowners Association request for assistance with repairs to the dam. Mr. Hathaway?
It'll take me just a second to get set up. You have Mr. David Smith, he's on the Woodhaven Property Owners Association Board, joining us.
I'm just going to take a.
Yeah.
I already called a meeting back to order. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This morning, you have before you a request from the Woodhaven Property Owners Association. And I'd like to let you know that we do have members from the Property Owners Association here today. We also have the engineer that they've contracted with today, and we have Mr. David Smith joining us by virtual meeting, who's out of the state currently, who is in charge of the dam committee. And that's Water Dam Committee. It just didn't sound right when it came out, sorry. But today, we have a request from the Property Owners Association. And I'm, I'm going to give you some background on, on the issue that they currently have. They have currently been notified by the Department of Conservation and Recreation that the spillway and dam over Lake Shore Drive is currently non-compliant. I don't believe they've gotten a formal violation notice yet, when a formal violation notice sets forth a process that has not been started yet. But they have been notified that the dam and spillway is in non-compliance. Therefore, they have been working diligently to address the issue. And basically, the spillway and dam under Lake Shore Drive at entrance, I believe that's entrance three, entrance one, will need to be rebuilt. They have recently secured a $250,000 grant, which they've spent probably about $80,000 towards developing plans to address the spillway and dam. I believe that plan was submitted to DCR. I believe that plan was approved, but they've recently received notice from DCR that that plan is now insufficient, which they need to go back to the drawing board to develop new plans. And I, I believe the regulations have changed again as far as dams and spillways that have roads on top of them, which is causing the need for the new redesign. The request before you today is, the Property Owners Association has an opportunity to go after a grant from DCR that will cover up to $500,000. Well, the grant is for up to $500,000 that can be used towards the construction. This grant requires a dollar-for-dollar match, so therefore, they would need $500,000 to secure the $500,000 grant. And that is what's being asked of the county today to provide the matching funds for the DCR grant. Design, the redesign work is underway for the spillway and dam. I believe there's a preliminary cost estimate of about a million dollars. We're now at one and a half million dollars. So the way, way this would work is, in order to secure the $500,000, a $500,000 match would be required to get a million dollars. The additional $500,000 would be solely coming from the county as, as, as requested. Anything above, the grant maximum amount would be requested by, from the county. That is, is where we are today. That's my best explanation of it and understanding of, of the issue. I'd be happy to answer questions and we do have the engineer and members of the community here as well.
Rodney, can the, can the match come from another grant?
I'm going to ask the engineer.
I was just thinking about community development block grants. Is that a possibility or no?
Okay, the, I'm sorry, the, the state grant program. Oh, I'm very sorry. My name is David Krasnicki. I'm the engineer with AMT Engineering. I've been working with Woodhaven actually since I was with Furling and Robertson back in 2014, so I've been on this dam for a very long time. But we had done the design before for what DCR had accepted, and they've now changed their position on that. So the spillway now needs to be much larger. It was a 30%, it was a 30% PMP, probable maximum precipitation requirement. It's now 90%. And it's partly due to what he was saying about the, with the road on the dam, they don't allow a spillway reduction. All right. Yeah, the grant programs, there is the state grant program that goes through DCR, administered by the VRA, Virginia Resource Authority. It pays up to 50% for engineering or construction, and high hazard dams are their priority, of course. The grants are entirely reimbursement-based, and that's the difficulty for most dam owners, is if they have a million-dollar project, they have to come up with a million dollars and then they can get the money back after the grant reimbursement. And it takes a long time. It takes a good six months or more to get reimbursements out of the state. They, the state is working on making that better, but so far, that's been our experience. All right. There is also federal grants available through FEMA. And that is one of the real hopes for this project here, is that FEMA grants will pay up to 65%. And what DCR tells us is that they can stack. You can do the 65% from FEMA and then 50% from the state for the remainder, which leaves 17 and a half percent to be paid. But again, it all has to be upfront and then reimbursed. But yes, so for a million-dollar project, $175,000 would be the, the net cost. For a million-dollar project, it'd be about a quarter million, for a million and a half that I've referenced. Yeah. And that's, so far, I've not seen the FEMA program go through. It is new. They are still getting started with it. They have a lot of money in that program, but I've not seen it actually been executed through because it takes time to design and build these things.
And that can be used for private, I mean, private roads and spillways?
Oh, yes, yes. Yeah, the, the FEMA and the state grants are both grant-eligible for Woodhaven, yes.
Anybody have any, Mr. Stewart?
I have a question for Rodney, I think. Is there any other dam spillway that you can think of in the county that would come and ask for this after they see us do this?
I, I, I do know, a couple of years ago, the dam and spillway at Patriots Landing has been inspected by DCR, and there are some violations there, too. We've had some conversations, and that's the, mainly impacts that third section, and I'm not familiar with that area's called. But we've, and they have a separate HOA, too. At the time, it was Mr. Green, but I think the president, Danny Green, but I think the president has changed since then. And they did come to the county as well, asking for assistance. Because it is a private matter, we informed them that, you know, we usually don't participate in private.
I think, I was on the board, actually, when we took that, just for some history, when we, when we took that in, B-DOT wouldn't take control of that dam, and they wanted the county to take it. So we really felt like it wasn't our obligation. That's because obviously the president's taking care of that road, so that's the reason. It's not, that's a private road now, and it's not a state-maintained road, so.
And how many homes are affected by, like, if we didn't do this, if we had to dry everything up, there was no road, who would, how many people would be affected by this?
Well, I, I would say the whole Woodhaven community would be infected. Affected 521 homes or 33 homes. 521 homes.
Got it, okay. And this might be a question for the homeowners association. If we weren't to do this, where would you get the money from? Or do you have a plan for that?
We have contacted our, we have contacted our bran, our main, our main branch of bank and had conversations with them about a large, you know, million-dollar-plus loans. And they said they would be willing to work with us. I haven't gone any further than that, but I do have contacts of them having conversations with us about, you know, a million-plus loans. I have discussed that with them.
And, if you don't mind, could you state your name and address?
Oh, yes, sure. My name is Mary Kay, last name Tossage, T-A-S-I-C-H, and my phone number is 804, oh, I'm sorry, address, 7568 Lake Shore Drive.
Thank you. Mr. Steers?
The only thing I was going to say is, this has been going on for, what, at least eight years that I know of. When I first got on the Board of Supervisors 12 years ago, shortly thereafter, it was spoken. It, it was spoken back then that DCR was requiring the spillway to be expanded. DCR is, is a group of people who are, in my opinion, are bureaucrats. And they are appointed, they're not elected. If they had to be elected, they would not get reelected. You know what I'm saying? There's nothing wrong with the dam. There's nothing wrong with the spillway. It's been there since the 50s, and it's, there's nothing wrong with, they have a great group of dam people that, that manage the dam, and they work very closely with Rick Opet. Anytime we have a hurricane coming, they go out there several days ahead and start dropping the water level, you know, to make sure that the, the, the water doesn't overflow out over the spillway. And I just, you know, but the thing about it is, and I, I don't think Woodhaven Shores is the community that you might find maybe in a Brickshire or in a Patriots Landing, as far as home values and that kind of stuff. And it's my understanding they don't have a whole lot of money to begin with. And most HOAs, or in their cases, a POA, doesn't have a million dollars laying around to throw out the window on something like that. But also, if that dam did break, it would not just affect Woodhaven Shores people. Highway 60 is there, it'd be washed out, and that is an evacuation route. Also, CSX Railroad comes through there, and they would wash the railroad out, too. So they'd be a lot more affected than just the Woodhaven people. And I would certainly hope that we could do something to help, help our neighbors. They, they, not only are, they're a great group of people, but they don't get a whole lot of benefits from the county, period, because they have their own roads, their roads are private, they have to pay to have their potholes filled. They have their own water company. So, I mean, they don't get a whole lot from the county. And if there's anything that we could do, you know, in regards to helping them out with this, I would appreciate it.
And I would just like to add, too, depending on the amount, if this is something that we want to pursue, it seems like there's an opportunity to get another federal grant. So seems like our, the contribution could be as little as 175,000 to a million dollars. So depending on grant opportunities. Because this impacts a roadway and would require a roadway to be rebuilt, we could also look into the possibility, and I believe that it would qualify, for the use of our local Central Virginia transportation funding, our local share of the funds, because it would impact transportation with the rebuild of a roadway.
Mr. Hathaway? My understanding, so you already had some engineering done and pretty much wasted $80,000. I mean, so that's, I mean, that's the frustrating part. I don't know how we can allocate funds, but we don't even know what a project's going to cost. I think we need to go back to DCR, and I mean, I think they should, should be on the hook a little bit. I mean, I mean, they should, should help out and, you know, we need to have some type of, you know, engineering plans before we can, you know, decide, make a, I don't, you know, you're saying 1.5 million is just one and a half million dollars since, since we've got this information. Who knows what it could be in six, eight months. So I just have a little concern about allocating, you know, money until we have more specifics.
And, and, and I will add, too, Mr. Steers and I participated in a meeting with DCR and the Property Owners Association, and we did, the community did, voiced their frustration with DCR over this process.
I can understand why.
I believe DCR is allowing, as, as a result of that meeting and other discussions, they are allowing a previous grant award that they received to pay for the redesign work that's currently taking place. So there's been some concession, but it's, it's been a frustrating process.
So, so can we, can we wait until that study comes in to be able to make some kind of decision?
My name is Wilbur Collins. I'm a resident of Woodhaven, 6035 Lakeside Drive. One of the biggest problems is, you want to know what it's going to cost. We can't get contractors to bid on it till we have some kind of commitment that we will have the money to do the job. Because when a contractor comes out to bid, of course, it costs them a lot of money to bid a job like that. So that is part of our problem, as far as telling you exactly what it's going to cost.
But the contractor doesn't have anything to bid on, if he doesn't have any plans.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. We got to have, when we get, when we get the plans, which, how are we doing on that?
Right now, we're at about a 50%.
Okay. So what you're saying is, once, once we get the plan to, to do the job, if we could get a commitment from the county that they would help us with this, then we could get contractors to come in and bid on it. And then we'd have the exact number of what we're, what we're coming up with.
I believe part of the, the reason for the timing of this request right now is, that Department of Conservation and Recreation grant is due next month, the end of next month. I've had an opportunity to review the grant application, and they need a commitment of the matching funds to be submitted with that grant application. So that's why timing is, is of the essence. It's an attempt to secure this DCR grant, the one that's up to $500,000.
What's the deadline for that?
If you could answer back the deadline on the grant, he's been working most closely with that.
March 15th.
March 15th is the deadline.
What about a low-interest loan? I'm sorry?
She asked, what about a low-interest loan? Is that something?
Or from the county, okay.
Oh, okay.
That, that, that is, is a possibility. That is something that we could put an agreement together. If there's a will to obligate the funds, we could do that in the form of a low-interest loan.
I mean, if we did that, could, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Could we do some sort of assessment to recoup it?
We would definitely have to have a conversation about collateral. Yeah.
Yeah, it's, you know, the first time.
Hey Rodney?
The first time.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
This is David Smith. Would it be helpful if, if Mr. Krasnicki would quickly go over the, the grant application process and what's required, so y'all understand the process?
I think we're, I mean, knowing the deadline is, I think we're good. Mr. Moore? The discussion about collateral, you know, for a loan like that, I'm not quite sure.
sure if I, if, if the, I, I, I appreciate being here and that, but the, the, the ability for the, to hold these people or the committee or the civic organization liable for this loan, I don't think it's there. I don't think there's any, any substance to that. It's not, it's not an HOA that has reserves set aside that can be looked at, or a bond that is already present. So that, that, I, I.
I agree with that. And, you know, as far as collateral, equipment, roads, infrastructure, that's typically things we wouldn't wanna take ownership of to begin with, because it's more of a liability to us. So I'm not sure if there would be a suitable form of collateral in this.
I think it's a lot for us to look into and, and maybe we should try to get some more information and bring it back to our, our board meeting on the, on the twelfth.
Okay.
Is that okay with the board?
Does New Kent County do service districts for sanitary, for sewer, for roadways, things along those lines? This has successfully been done for dams in other counties in Virginia as well. And the whole idea was just that it could be paid back through property taxes. Stafford County comes to mind in particular, I think they've done it several times. Just as a way to at least have money fronted so that the work could proceed.
I think that's, you know, I think that would give us, I think we need to look at all those options.
It would be similar to the Bottoms Bridge Avenue District, we could look at that.
But my que, I mean, how well does everybody pay their POA dues now?
We're, we've, we've decided about twenty percent, we've got a twenty percent that we're still working on collecting that's past due. But for the majority of the part, part, I would say we've got eighty percent.
So you have eighty percent collection?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, the problem with that, Mr. Evelyn, is they started the POA several years ago after homes were already built in there. And legally, they can't go back and nobody's, can be forced to pay the dues. And there are some people who.
I looked into that and it, there's no, there's no.
End of the running.
Sorry about that. I did look into that, there was a precedence that said it was five years, but that's not true because we are a POA versus an HOA. And we do have the right to collect the amount of, the sum that's due for the property. So I'm working on, looking at specifics with the court in regards to liens on specific properties. So that, I am working on that now.
If I can ask Pam, how much that annual dues are?
Roughly, I mean, it does vary, but I would say our average is right around four hundred dollars a year. Some are a little higher because of the amount of properties or lots that the individuals have, but the average lot is around four hundred dollars. And we only charge that yearly. It's a yearly due.
Well, I think, you know, we've got some legal issues we gotta look at and, you know, on that and let's table that until our, our February regular meeting. All right, our next item is update on proposed Route two forty-nine water line design and constructions. Mr. Lang.
All right, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Mike Lang, Public Utilities Director, here to provide an update on the Route two forty-nine water line. Had a pretty extensive written update in my agenda request. I won't reread the whole thing, but just a little bit about the need for the project. Virginia DEQ has been for many years directing the county to find an alternative to groundwater. Their modeling shows that the growth of the county exceeds the groundwater available for the future. So we've invested over the past seven or eight years in alternative supply investigation and we've identified a few possibilities, either of which require interconnecting the county's largest water systems. It would not make sense to bring in an alternative supply until we can get that water to the, the water customers. So the Route two forty-nine interconnecting water line is a huge part of that. That interconnects Bottoms Bridge to the Farms of New Kent Water System and would create a central water system for New Kent County. That could then be expanded to include some of the smaller water systems, Quentin Park, perhaps Mini Tree Glen, eventually New Kent Courthouse. So that's the long-term plan. There would be some remaining groundwater supplied systems and they're mainly out in the rural areas and not really accessible for, for water distribution. So this project is going to be on the south side of two forty-nine between Quentin Elementary School and the New Food Lion at the roundabout at six twelve. So there are three phases to the project. The Pomeroy Park developer, Rogers and Chenault, is building approximately a mile and a half of water line for their development, which is currently under review. And we have a flow control valve at the Bottoms Bridge tank to regulate the filling of the tank from the Farms of New Kent tank. And then finally, we have the county's phase of the Route two forty-nine water line, which is about two miles from Clintwood Lane to Quentin Elementary. The county has agreed to reimburse Rogers and Chenault, the Pomeroy developer, about four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars to oversize their pipe to the future needs. And that was approved at the previous board meeting. To date, Public Utilities has invested almost a million dollars in survey, design, and easement acquisition. And the construction is estimated to be about seven point eight five million dollars. As far as scheduling, the developer, Rogers and Chenault, intends to begin in the next few months, April of twenty twenty-four. Simultaneously, we are acquiring easements for the water line project and hope to have those completed and paid by July of this year. And we'd like to go ahead and get the flow control valve out to bid. We do have money set aside for that. And then finally, looking at our portion of the water line construction beginning July twenty twenty-five. With a project like this, there are always impacts to the community and we like to remain mindful of those. Traffic is going to be one big one that's going to impact everyone. Obviously, land disturbance wherever we're excavating and grading. Driveways, cut and patch asphalt and concrete driveways where we're crossing. And then there's quite a few residents that have requested or have complained about the drainage of their existing ditch lines. So where that's in the area we're working, in the area of disturbance, we're certainly gonna leave those in better condition than we found them. On the environmental end, we've obtained all of our permits. We will drill under Old Pond to, or it's also referred to as Lake Johnson, to avoid any impacts there. And we've invested about twenty thousand dollars in additional ground penetrating radar and soil borings at the Providence United Methodist Church Cemetery to confirm that we don't dig anyone up when we excavate in there. So. Finally, and probably most pertinent to the public at this point, is we're in the process of acquiring easements. I believe as of Monday, they had nineteen signed easements out of forty-seven. I've spoken personally to several property owners who had questions and concerns and we're on good terms with everyone. I don't think we've had anyone that's told us, hell no, you're not coming through here. But it's important to point out that, you know, we're fully invested in this side of the road. We can't crisscross the road to avoid one or two properties. So ultimately, where we can't get easements, condemnation or eminent domain is the, is the final resolution. We don't try and hold that over anyone's head as a threat, that's just the reality of, of public utilities. So, so far, I don't, I don't see us going to that phase with any of these easements. We do have a third party working on the easement acquisition. So I don't reach out to these folks personally, but my door's open if they have questions. With that, I will, not mentioned here, there are no mandatory connections. So if folks wanna connect, and I see every other week, there's a new well being drilled on Route two forty-nine. And a lot of these people do wanna connect because they have a shallow well that's either drying up or contaminated from runoff and those sorts of things. So we're offering double the easement value towards connection fees for folks that wanna connect.
Thank you, Ms. Lang. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Steers?
Yes, Ms. Lang, what, what is the fee, hookup fee?
The total connection fee for water for residential is about seventy-six fifty, seven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
And is there a discount if they go ahead and hook up now as, as opposed to waiting two years from now?
As long as they commit to the connection now and don't take the cash, they can connect whenever they could, we will start their service whenever they're ready. We'll go ahead and put the box in, we'll hang on to the meter until they're ready, till we get their application. So no cost to them until they're ready for water service.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Ms. Lang.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
You too. Next item, proposed fiscal year twenty, twenty-five, twenty-nine capital improvement plan and proposed fee changes, Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This morning, I'm just gonna do a brief introduction. I'm not gonna go project by project like I've done in the past. I just wanna go and explain the document that you have before you. First of all, I'd like to start with what qualifies as a capital expenditure. And per our financial policy, it is twenty-five thousand dollars or more. And the item has an estimated useful life of five years or more. Annually, we put together a five-year capital improvements plan, which you have my recommendation before you to cover years twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-nine. In this plan, there are projects totaling through the five-year period, over a hundred and eighty-eight million dollars of, of projects. But again, that is a five-year plan. Looking at the upcoming fiscal year twenty twenty-five, next fiscal year plan, starting July one, I am recommending projects totaling nine million four hundred and forty-six thousand four hundred and forty dollars in our general capital improvements plan. And our CIP also consists of public utility projects totaling just over ten million dollars. We keep the two plans different because they have different funding sources. The public utility projects comes out of the public utility fund, which comes from user fees and connection fees. Each year during the budget process, I also direct each department to evaluate the fees that they collect. And we've done that and on page thirteen of this document, you will see a list of proposed fee changes. And what I'm looking for specifically is, number one, does the fee cover the cost of providing the service? And is it consistent with the market and what other localities are, are charging? And as a result of that, we do have some proposed airport fees changes. And even with these changes, we'll still be the cheapest airport in, in, in the region, which has been a benefit to us. But because of that, our hangar spaces are full. We have no additional hangar space, which as you'll see in the list of CIP projects for next fiscal year, I am proposing money to begin the design and engineering for new hangars at the airport. It's my goal that the airport will be self-sufficient. And in order to do that and in order to generate more revenues at the airport, we need more hangar space. There are also some building permit fee increases, mainly for amusement, rides and devices, you know, carnivals, things of that nature, even the bouncy houses, they require inspections. And we're proposing fees that are more consistent with our, our regional localities are charging. And then there are some fire and rescue recovery fees that are being proposed too. The main reason for this increase is our recent increases in salaries of our public safety rate workers. We're reflecting those salary increases in our cost collection fees. Big projects for next fiscal year, I've mentioned the hangar design, which is the first step in the process to construct new hangars at our airport. I am proposing a new community center. On the Warren I Trail property, there is enough land there that's currently wooded and not being used to allow for the construction of a new community center to serve the east end of the county. We know from Quentin Community Center, there, there is a demand, there is a need, because that facility stays booked throughout the year. And we also realize that there is a lack of that type of facility in the eastern end of the county. You'll see various fire and rescue projects being proposed, one with the replacement of an ambulance, the purchase of a new ambulance. And there's also some gear and equipment that's being proposed for FY twenty-five. And then I, which is a change from previous years, there are significant requests in projects being proposed in our IT department. We learned some valuable lessons this year with our network, with going through a compromise of our, our countywide computer network. And there's some improvements that's been recognized by our consultants. There's also some survey and infrastructure that has reached its life cycle and they're being proposed to be replaced. For Parks and Rec, I am proposing a splash pad facility to be constructed at Quentin Park. Every year, we do an online survey to the community, asking the community what facilities, what programs they would like to see and provided by Parks and Rec. And splash pads came up there, second to a pool. We're still working on the pool, but we do believe that we can move forward with the splash pad facility. We do have some parking lot improvements also proposed at Quentin Park and basketball courts at Pine Fork Park. And speaking of Pine Fork, I don't know if anyone has ridden by there lately, but the lights are up. They're not on yet, we're still finishing that, that up, but the lights, the, the structures are up. So those are the big ticket items. Again, I stated I wasn't gonna go through every single request, but you have them before you. Also in the packet, I believe, starting at page sixteen, you have the background information for every single project that's being proposed in, in the packet. That background information is what was submitted by the departments in requesting funding for those, those items. No action is required today. Our CIP is adopted with the adoption of our full budget, which we anticipate will be in the April-May timeframe. with the adoption of our full budget, which we anticipate will be in the April-May timeframe. We are working towards presenting my budget recommendation at your March meeting. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Am I having questions, Ms. Pearson?
I have a few questions. Rodney, I didn't see the animal control facility in here. Is that because it's already been approved?
That's already been approved and funded. That's moving very well as far as designs. We're probably at about forty percent on the designs of that new building.
Okay. And also, the New Kent Elementary, is that a renovation or a replacement for fifty-five million?
Because I meant to bring that up. You'll notice that there's three projects that were submitted by the schools that you don't see a recommendation from me on. And that's the construction of a new elementary school and demolition of the existing New Kent Elementary School. I believe fifty-six million dollars is proposed for that. There's also a three-point five million dollar project to expand the New Kent Middle School, which would add six classrooms to the existing school. And there's a two million dollar project to install or construct a turf field, artificial turf field at our current high school football field. That's something that we're looking at right now because of the cost of those projects. The funding would not come from our capital project. More than likely, it would come from debt service, which is our main fund, our general fund, if that's something the board would decide to move forward on. But we're looking at some financing options for those projects.
Was the fifty-five million for a complete replacement, or is that a...
A complete replacement.
Right. So if we do a renovation, it should not be that much, correct?
It should be much less. I would hope that it would be.
And just one more question. The additional revenue for the public safety increases, do you know how much that is annually with the increases?
I can get that number. What that takes into account is the pay raises that we did last year. I can pull that number for you.
Okay, thank you.
The fifty-six million dollars, fifty-five?
The description is on page...
Okay.
Rodney, is there any way to, or somebody from finance, is there any way to figure out the additional operational costs that we incur because of the capital cost?
Yeah, on the, yes. And if you look at all the capital cross down the board, when departments submit their request on the form, there is a place to include the additional operating cost that goes along with that capital request. That is required by code for us to look at, and it's definitely something we look at for all of our projects.
Question, this might be a question for Chief Opet back there. I saw him just wanting to talk to me. For the public safety increased fee or proposed increased fees, how often do y'all actually recover the fees for, like, taking an ambulance or something like that? Is that, because I know, I don't think it's always, but I don't know what the...
That's a good question.
So for the fees when we put out for private institutions, so when we have the marathons, that's a very good example, and it's an outside agency not hosted by a county function, we receive those back in, you know, we send them an invoice, they come back pretty good. Usually, if it's a county function, that's not billed because it's Robin Peter to pay Paul. So we do pretty well recovering those fees back from any private entity that utilizes those services.
And does private entity, so I got the marathon example, but does that mean, like, Joe Smith, that you go to his house and take him in an ambulance to the hospital, or...
So when you look on the fees there, you'll see like an ALS one, or EMS transport fees. So you'll see a BLS, an ALS. Right now, this year, our reimbursement, we're looking at about right around six hundred thousand dollars. We're trending right around six hundred thousand dollars of reimbursement funds that go back into the general fund. As you can imagine, as we're getting busier, that number has been climbing the past few years of revenue, and we include that in our revenue and our budget. So I think you'll see a significant increase over the past, I know definitely, five years of that revenue generation. And especially recovery is what you call. Now, I tell you, we just were informed last week that the FDA is now pushing, right now in the region, that we do our own drug boxes. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The region does their own drug boxes. So it's a drug box where the hospitals fill those. The FDA is not going to allow that anymore. So looks like we are going to be on the hook for buying our own drugs for our ALS program. So we're going to have to come up with additional revenues to see what that's going to look like here come, and I believe it's going to be November timeframe when we're going to be on the hook. The good thing is, we have our DEA licenses and all that to do that. But that's going to be a big component of recovering those costs going forward.
Thank you.
I think you probably, but if you have a New Kent residence that you transport that does not have insurance, I mean, what's the protocol?
That's correct. We do have compassionate billing. So we have a third-party biller. So when we go out on a call and we collect their insurance information, okay, they receive the insurance, whether it be Medicaid, Medicare, or their private insurance, whatever that doesn't cost or that doesn't cover, the resident will get a third-party bill, and we compassionate bill. So they get that bill, and we don't follow up with them. If they send it in and they have the means to do so, wonderful, it covers some cost. But we don't go after any residents at all for that.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
No, but just a comment on what Chief Opet said. I think that's an awesome policy that you guys have, that, you know, you send them a bill one time, if they pay it, okay. If they don't, you try.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you.
Next item, five, R-05-24, initiation of text amendment to section ninety-one dash ten of the New Kent County Code. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Again, you have a for you resolution, R-05-24. This is an initiating resolution for the consideration of a subdivision ordinance text amendment. This is a request that we've received from a property owner in the county, and the proposed language was submitted by the property owner's attorney. Let me start with the situation that the property owner is having, which I think will explain the reasoning for this request. The property owner has a hundred and fifty acres that's currently in the agricultural and forestal district. That owner is looking at buying six point eight acres from an adjacent twenty-two acre parcel. Our current code says that in order to do a boundary line adjustment between the two parcels, you can only do a boundary line adjustment if both properties are in the AFD program. That's not the case here. Only the one property, the hundred and fifty acres, is in the AFD program. So therefore, that owner would have to pull his property out of the AFD program. He would be subject to five years of back taxes, then do the boundary line adjustment, and then reapply to put the property back into the AFD program. That owner feels that there should be an easier, simpler process, and therefore, he's proposed the language for consideration that you have before you. And I would like to state, because we've asked the question, too, well, why can't they just purchase the six point eight acres and then put that in the AFD program and then do the boundary line adjustment? Unfortunately, he does not have that opportunity because the six point eight acres is part of a larger parcel, and there's no way through our current subdivision ordinance to subdivide that and create a six point eight acre parcel in the current zoning that it's in. So the only thing he can do to take ownership of that property is to adjust it within the boundaries of his current property. So what's being proposed here for consideration is that when a property owner submits a boundary line adjustment application and goes through that review process, prior to or with the submission of the final plat for signature, that means they've been through the boundary line of process, they've gotten a letter from us saying that your boundary line adjustment has been reviewed, there's no further comments, you can submit your final plat for signature. At that phase of the boundary line adjustment process, the property owner would also have to submit his application for the six point eight acres to be included in the AFD program. Now, the concern or the issue is, we would have signed off on that boundary line adjustment prior to that six point acres being accepted into the AFD program. So that property owner would take on the risk of everything being kicked out if that six point eight acres was not approved into the AFD program. So this is not a perfect process. I still think it needs some tweaking and consideration by staff. But if this is something that you want us to look at, initiating this resolution would do that. We would work on the language and bring something to the planning commission. I do also want to let you know, though, we're in the process of finishing up the rewrite of our comp plan, which is the second step of a three-step process, because we've done our strategic plan, which was a first step, comp plan is the second step. And once that's complete, we move on to our third step, which is the rewrite of our subdivision and zoning ordinances. So we could take the approach that this could be looked at in a more comprehensive approach, or we could adopt this initiating resolution and look at this issue now.
Anybody having comments?
I would prefer that the planning commission take a look at this before we do anything with it, personally. I mean, I think that they probably have other thoughts on it, maybe, in a comprehensive kind of way.
And that's what this resolution does. It initiates the process and sends it to the planning commission. Ms. Stewart, any?
I have a technical question. I know when you exit the AFD, you have to pay the taxes that are due on it. What's the duration? Do you pay it from the time you've owned it or up to the day you get out of it? Or does anybody...
The time that you, what your, the back pay is the tax break that you've received. And we can only collect up to five years, but it starts from the date that you were accepted into the AFD program. So if you've only been in two years, you only respond to two years.
And at the end of the day, too, is, you know, we can suggest that it goes in AFD, but it's really up to the commissioner that really qualifies it for the AFD. Now, that would be my question. Has anybody, I see she walked in now. Has the commissioner looked over this?
She's been sent the original language, which is this, just not in resolution form, from the attorney. And there's been concerns voiced that we, there's been concerns voiced that we should be careful in this, that we don't create other issues while trying to address this one issue with this one property owner, which I think is a very fair...
And I think we're trying to keep the rural lands in the counties to understand it. We just got to make sure we get it right and don't affect something else.
Well, I think the issue is our description of subdivision, and, you know, it has to be very careful when we relangauge this because the way the AFD program runs, anytime you're going to make an exemption, then you're going to make an exception for others coming forward. And can it impact that program? It is the number one exemption program. I mean, most of people in this program get seventy-five percent of their land taxes deferred for non-development or change. So I think that anytime we're looking at changing a contract, we have to also look at, you know, how does this affect our definition of a subdivision? I've always indicated that we need to tighten up some of those rules anyway, because some properties that haven't been subdivided in several years and exist in an actual subdivision should not qualify for this program. So there's, I have some issues on just setting a precedent based on one issue, and that we need to be careful. And does this change what our definition of subdivision is? I don't know. Just need to be very careful proceeding, in my opinion.
Thank you for your thoughts.
Everybody, do we need a motion to send it to the planning commission?
If there was a member who would like to do that, yes, a motion would be appropriate.
I believe the motion that is prepared, I'm sorry, my computer would be sufficient to adopt this resolution, which would forward it to the planning commission.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to the resolution, send it to the planning commission, correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Adopt resolution R-5-24.
So just to be clear, if we're in the future, after study, after going to the planning commission, if this resolution were adopted, the matter would then go to the planning commission for consideration. Staff would look at the language, including the planning department, the commissioner's office, my office, of course, administration. We would look at the language and see if we had any other edits. We would adopt any recommendations if we had any. And then it would come back before the board. It would need to come at a public hearing. It would need to be done by ordinance. It would need to be advertised, all of those things.
Good. That's what I wanted to know.
So we just can send this, I guess, or something?
It still has to be vetted properly.
This requires, because it's an amendment of the subdivision ordinance, it requires two public hearings, one before the planning commission and one before the board.
So the resolution does that? It sent it forward to the planning commission, but it still has to go through all the regular process?
Yes, ma'am. So the resolution before the board today states that if this resolution would be adopted pursuant to a motion, that the Board of Supervisors of New Kent County does hereby request the New Kent County Planning Commission to consider the proposed amendment of chapter ninety-one of the New Kent County Code. And that is to consider the issue generally. It won't necessarily be an up or down vote on the specific language requested by the property owner. There could be other amendments. And if the board did want to take action on an eventual ordinance after public hearing at a business meeting...
That's what I want to make sure that they can change the language.
It's going to come back to us.
Yes, it will come back to you, and you could either adopt what's been suggested, change the language, or decline to do so.
Okay. All right. Adopt resolution R-5-24 to initiate a subdivision ordinance text amendment to section ninety-one dash ten of the New Kent County Code regarding boundary line adjustments and lack consolidations for properties within land use taxation programs such as the agricultural and forestal districts.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Is any comments discussion? Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
And Mr. Avalon?
Aye. Motion passed.
Rodney, I gather that would not be in the February planning session, maybe because of having to advertise it.
Well, it won't be advertised.
And two, we probably, and I haven't talked to staff yet, prior to going to public hearing, we probably would want to do some type of work session presentation to the planning commission before scheduling a public hearing.
Very good, very good. Thank you.
We need to be careful. All right, item six, nominations for the Board of Equalization. I think the deadline, I mean, does everybody, does anybody have a nominee?
I'm not.
All right, you'll start, Ms. Stewart?
Can you start on the other end?
Okay. I move to nominate Mei Ling Qiu for circuit court appointment as a member of the Board of Equalization to serve a term ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
the Board of Equalization to serve a term ending December 31, 2024.
I'll go next. I move to nominate Matt Starr for a circuit court appointment as a member of the Board of Equalization to serve a term ending December 31, 2024.
Ms. Watkins, didn't I already appoint someone?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. I move to nominate Russell Byer for circuit court appointee as a member of the Board of Equalization to serve a term ending December 31, 2024.
I'm ready, ma'am. Mr. Chair, I move to nominate Lisa Remington for circuit court appointment as a member of the Board of Equalization to serve a term ending December 31, 2024.
All right. Thank you, I'm waiting to hear from mine. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members on the appointments or the nominations to the Board of Equalization?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
And Mr. Avalon?
Aye. Next is other business. Anybody have any?
Mr. Chair, I've got other business. I would like to move to remove Beth Trivitt as a fifth district representative on the Board of Social Services or the Social Services Advisory Committee, whatever it's called.
Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Avalon?
Aye.
Anybody have any other business?
I got a town hall meeting at the Patriots Landing Residents Club on February 8th from 6 to 8.
Just wanted to mention some February happenings. February is Black History Month. On Saturday, February 3rd, at the Historic Courthouse from 11 to 1, there will be a wreath laying ceremony honoring African-American patriots from New Kent that served during the Revolutionary War. I, too, am having a town hall on Tuesday, February 6th, from 6 to 8, at the New Kent Visitor Center. On February 17th, there is a gala at Rosie's to benefit the Bridges of Change Domestic Violence Shelter. Tickets are still available for that. And on February 24th, there's a casino night for the New Kent Junior Women's Club, and the tickets for that are only available through sponsorships. That's all I have.
Our next meeting scheduled of the Board of Supervisors will be held at 6:00 PM on Monday, February 12, 2024, and the next work session will be held Tuesday, February 27, 2024, both in the boardroom of the County Administration Building. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
And Mr. Avalon?
Aye.
Adjourn.